Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gervailia, here's Mr. Shory, Mr. Perkins, Mr. Mesersmith, Mayor Connor.
There are two copies of minutes.
The first minute that we have is for the continuation of the December 9 meeting and this place on Friday, December 13th. So if everyone has had an opportunity to look at those minutes, I'd like to make some open with those minutes be approved. Mr. Gervailia? Yes. Mr. Shory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesersmith?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Yes.
The second copy of minutes that you have is for December 23rd, and I trust everyone's had an opportunity to look at those. There's no changes or corrections, so just make them open. That'll be pretty. Mr. Gervailia? Yes. Mr. Shory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesersmith?
Yes.
Mayor Connor? Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna skip down to Public Affairs Report and then on Part B, presentation from Rick Lethem and Jackie Baker.
You know, those are good people, they're gonna be like, "Oh, you're a charmer." Thanks guys for allowing me to come back to you this evening. I'm here along with Rick. And we wanted to just let you all know, I think with Todd Camer and other folks, but get everybody in the loop. We've got an amazing opportunity to host a national archery tournament at Ren Lake. And tourism folks are going to be really the host and the sponsor for this event, but the Corps of Engineers is obviously providing the infrastructure and the location. So Rick and I are here to tell you a bit about that. I wanted to kind of share with you how we got to this point and how we have stumbled upon this opportunity to host a national event at Ren Lake for the next three years. So one of the reasons that Ren Lake is here is for economic development. And last few years, we've really been pushing to try, like, what can we do to get more people in our community spending money? And as part of that, we've looked at our North Markham Recreation Area. You all may know it closed in the 80s, it was a campground. And we were working on our long-term plan, our master plan, and said, "What can we do to make this area more viable?" So as part of that plan, we decided that we were going to try to construct, create low-density recreation opportunities. So as we evolved along, we worked with Mr. Mesersmith and others to establish a partnership agreement with about, I don't know, now it's up to eight to 10 different entities to establish a new archery complex at Ren Lake, archery complex and mountain bike trail. So we are well along, we just started that, we just really started planning about 15 months ago. So right now, we're about one half constructed. So we've moved along, and we're gonna have a great opportunity there in partnership with the Conservancy District, with Lee and the bike organization, with the Ren Lake College. So that's kind of, that's the short story as to how we got into the business of hosting this national archery tournament. So as part of the planning and design of this recreation complex, we ran across a gentleman who is part of the S3DA, and they're basically a national organization, and their intent is to get youth into the outdoors, encouraging responsible hunting, and they host a bunch of tournaments nationally and internationally. So that's the, the long story shortened up. So when we stumbled across Jim Sharp, he helped us design the trail, and he said, "You know, you guys ought to host some tournaments here once you get up and rolling. You've got plenty of opportunity." So we, one of the six national tournaments that have been held, that are held nationally, has been held near Metropolis for the last several years at Mermet Springs, State Fish and Wildlife Area. So we went down and spoke with the coordinator, the national coordinator of the tournament, and said, "Why don't you come up to Ren and see what you think?" So they came up, they looked at it, they liked it. The other piece of that is, is this tournament, Rick will talk more specifically, we expect to end one weekend, anywhere from a $3 to $5 million boost of expenditure in the communities. But in Metropolis, they didn't have a lot of support facilities, except across the river. So they estimated 70% of the economic stimulus was into Kentucky. So here, we have hotel rooms in Mount Vernon, we have hotel rooms in Marion. So we're expecting to fill 1,500 hotel rooms that weekend. So along those lines, the Corps, we can host it, we can provide the site, but there's a lot of things we can't do. And that's where Rick and Barb, tourism folks, come in. They've agreed to be the hosts, they've signed a contract with S3DA for this tournament, and Rick will fill in the gaps there. But we expect at least 1,500 youth participants each year, and based on, there's six national tournaments held across the nation. Based on statistics from the organization, they say each participant comes with about 3.8, round it up, four spectators, grandma, grandpa, mom and dad. And the way the tournament is set up is it's held in, like, three segments each day. So there are families in our communities with two-thirds of their day not filled up, looking for things to do. And so this tournament, we want it to be a success, particularly this first year, because we want these people to keep coming back. And once they discover Benton and Ren Lake, hopefully they'll keep, continue to come back and spend money in our community. So that's the backstory of it. Rick's gonna kind of, and why we're here is because this isn't a Corps of Engineers thing, this isn't the tourism post, this is an event that's gonna require the community to embrace it so that we can make it better and keep, you know, get people in our communities and return. So with that, Rick, I'll turn it over to you, but thank you so much for the opportunity to come and bring you up to speed on that.
Thank you. So like I said, they had estimated 1,000 to 1,500 student athletes will be showing up, accompanied by, they say 3.2 family members, probably gonna need about 1,500 motel rooms. So everything that we've got will be filled up, and of course, probably Marion and Mount Vernon as well. We have visited the commission visitors bureaus in both Marion and Mount Vernon to see if they could share some of the burden of cost of this. Again, it's probably gonna be at least $2 to $3 million impact on the area. Some of the considerations are like, we have to have 30 rooms for their management team, and that's for three nights. And we have, they're gonna have to have portable restrooms, tents, tables, security, an internet portal in that area, emergency EMTs, ice water for just participants, ATVs. Ray Meyer's already said he will get us four, four-seaters, so we've got, we've got that covered. But these are the kind of things we're gonna have to try to get people to sign up to help us with all the in-kind things, as well as money sponsorships that we can have. We're gonna need a construction trailer with a cop here and for their staff, for the internet, where they can go in and do all the scoring and so forth. Probably gonna need 50 to 75 hours here, because that's gonna be like a four-day, ton of work. Trash cans throughout the area, signage, we're gonna have to have some major signage to show them how to find this place, you know, when they're driving down the highway, even though they will, they will have GPS where they can, they can find it. But there's some pictures here of the crowds at some of these events. It's really gonna be, it's gonna be huge. And it's not gonna be just one day or whatever, it's gonna be four days of this. One thing that we're gonna do, I'm gonna hand this out, I've got, I put down some pricing. This is probably 27 to, 25 to 27,000 dollar investment. And I can hand out some of these sheets. This is just a list of what we call opportunities for people to advertise.
Opportunities for sponsorship.
Yeah. We're hoping to get people, you know, help us sponsor that. To start out with, we've got about $9,000 investment in the rooms, that's at about $90 each, average. We have already set aside 10 rooms for the tourism, we will cover, but we're trying to get Mount Vernon and Marion to cover 10 rooms each, so we get the 30 rooms covered. That's the biggest, biggest thing on it, but if you look down that list, you'll see that we've probably got $27,000 worth of investment. I increased some of these figures from where we started because I don't think bottled water might cost us quite a bit if we, but we're gonna have to have these, we're gonna have to have, like I have on the golf course, where you can help you fill up a cup with water, that's what they want throughout the, throughout the area where the kids are competing. And that's something too, they'll be competing in probably three different groups, there'll be a junior group, a junior high group, and a high school group, I think, that will compete during the day. And so those people will be out there for two or three hours competing, and then they're gonna be out in the community spending money. And so that's what, we're trying to get everybody on board with us, help us out either in-kind with some of these things that we need on this list, or help with financially to cover the burden of the motel rooms and all the things that we'll actually have to rent. Jim Merrill was up to be, and we made a presentation the other night, he promised me he would come along because he was pretty excited about this event as well. I'm gonna let Jim talk to you, and then we'll leave you guys with your meeting.
Rick, thank you. Thank you. I'll be very, very hard to read, but I, I was at the meeting, the county board meeting, a few weeks ago when Jackie and Rick gave the presentation. And I immediately, before Rick left the room, said, "You know, how can I get involved in this?" Because one of the things that stands out to me, when we were out trying to sell the courthouse, one of the things that really kind of amazed me was the amount of money that's generated by Ren Lake. We did some homework on that, and annually, about $36 million a year spent within a 30-mile radius of Ren Lake, for all of Franklin County, is within a 30-mile radius of Ren Lake. So not all that money's going to Franklin County, but a good chunk of it's going to Franklin County. And events like this excite me because if you have an event with kids that's gonna be there, the parents, as I said, parents, grandparents, it's no, it's no mistake that they don't, that they have the future reiners. At, at, we carry a gymnasium about three or four times a year, because they know when those kids come up there, the parents, grandma, grandpa, they'll come up and watch and play, and so you fill the gym up and you bring the kids up. So I think that's the same thing here. And I just, I'm behind it, and I just, I wanna try and get everybody personally, as a council likes to get behind it, but individually, likes to get behind it, do it, and help promote it every way you can. Because I think events like this throughout the year out there would help, would help Ren Lake, and I believe when folks see that lake once, they'll come back to it. I believe, I believe that that's how, that's what kind of hidden treasure I think we've got out there. So I just, I'm here to lend support, and again, I'm the present, I'm with the presentation that they gave. And one more quick thing I wanna say before I, before I sit down, it's kind of a two-fold purpose for me being here. A lot of change is taking place in Franklin County government right now. And we'll be moving, start moving this Friday out of the courthouse. The county clerk and the county treasurer's office will be closed Thursday and Friday of this week. Saturday, Sunday, of course, for the weekend, Monday is a holiday, and also will be closed Tuesday. And they hope to be set up shop at Campbell Building on Wednesday, the 22nd, for the first day. So that, that's something to keep in mind. Our office is gonna try, the circuit clerk's office is gonna try and stay open throughout the transition, and we, actually, we can't shut down, we have to stay open. But we're gonna have kind of a split crew at two different locations. We're gonna start moving all the files over on Friday morning, we got a moving company coming out of Heron. Unbelievable task we had last week to unload that big vault of all the files. I mean, we've got banker boxes stacked everywhere in the courthouse right now. That'll start Friday morning, and we'll start, then we'll start moving the county treasurer and the county clerk. Something to note, you might wanna write down, there's a new, gonna be a new automated phone system going there on, they will come live in the Campbell Building on January 22nd, which is Wednesday, 435-9800, 435-9800. And you can access circuit clerk, county clerk, treasurer, domestic violence advocate, the court security, judges and court reporters. There's, I think there's 10 different prompts on the, on the automated system. Trying to think of the, oh, the Benton Evening News, the McVicker out of Heron, who I think tore down the old city hall, they, they got the low bid on the, on the demolition of the Evening News, and that's supposed to take place, I think it's a 10-day waiting period mandated by the EPA, and after that, and that is already counting, they'll jump in and get that knocked down, and then work up again, immediately trying to make, get that ready for a parking lot. So things are moving very quickly, but we'll be set, and the court system will actually be shut down, except for emergencies, or if there's orders of protection, things like that, but beginning next week, Monday's a holiday, Tuesday we are down, the court system, no courts, nothing scheduled. Then we're gonna be there Wednesday for some preliminary hearings, then Thursday and Friday that week, nothing scheduled, nothing scheduled the next week, and then nothing scheduled the next week. So the first court date we're hoping to have in the Campbell Building will be February the 10th. That, that's the plan right now. So just a lot of things going on, and the work at the Campbell Building is unbelievable, what they've done there as far as turning that basement around and the top also. The main entrance will be on the east side, beginning on February the 10th. You're going to the east on that new addition added on. And you know, I think it's gonna be something we're all gonna be very proud of, and I think it's gonna be something that'll be a great asset to Benton and to Franklin County. So anyway, I appreciate your time very much, thank you, and God bless.
There are any questions in the council? Do you have any questions?
Are you planning to stay for the duration of the meeting, or is there some conversation and questions that's gonna come up in regards to parking and adjacent lots and kind of wrestling with that a little bit?
I think so.
Would you mind saying so?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just have one more thing. We're probably gonna do, we get into things like gift bags for the participants, and I'm gonna put a special link on our website, so participants can go to that, look at lodging, and there'll be, the merchants might wanna give coupons or any kind of special things for that event as well. Also, we got the new visitor guide out, we got 20,000 votes delivered the other day, and got them into the office. And tomorrow morning, I'll be receiving the business directories, the 2020 business directory and the visitor guides are done. And we also have been accepted by State of Illinois and all of tourist information centers in the State of Illinois, so these will be, these will be shipped out immediately to them.
You wanna thank you, Rick? Thank you, Barb.
There is one more thing I wanted to add, something I forgot to mention. When I talk about this tournament, this isn't just local folks, this is one of six national tournaments, and we expect participation from it, from across the nation, from, we expect 35 states to be represented, so people be coming into the area, exposed to the area, exposed to Ren Lake, just to come back, so I just wanted to throw that out there, it's something that I failed to mention earlier. But thank you guys so much for allowing me.
Thank you.
I have something I wanna say because of what the Corps has done with, with building this archery facility, we can now market to a whole group of people we couldn't market to before. And it's all because they had a master plan, and they built, they, they went out on a limb, and they're building this archery. And I think that's fantastic support for communities. If they hadn't done this, we, there's a whole group of people out there we couldn't market to. Also, if you do decide to be a sponsor, take on a sponsorship, and this, we're going to, in-kind, make sure your name gets out there, your logo, your, if you're a business or an individual, we wanna make sure, that's how we, you know, help you get your name out there and advertise for you, you know, based on your sponsorship. And that's, you know, that's the best, that's what we're gonna be doing. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rob.
Public property report, Commissioner Perkins.
Really don't have anything to say tonight, and the only thing I want to talk about is usually, is how I have a thing, I do a little spot called Sunshine. You know, in politics, we always talk about stuff good, because it seems like the world's being bad. And so I'm gonna talk about my little Southern Grey, gee, I'm from hospital, I've been to two city council meetings, I, the first one was the birth of him, and the second was due to the fact that I had brought home, which was the 23rd, which is always exciting. Wasn't able to make the meeting. I guess you hear about the meeting, ironically, it was kind of neat. One of the things that, when you have a child, you kind of, what, what kind of person are they gonna be? What kind of, you know, young adult, how are they gonna progress in life? Are they gonna be a tyrant, or are they gonna be a sweet angel? And one of the things that I've always been to steal in my life is the guard against coward and bully. Well, at that meeting, seemed like we had some cowardly act during that meeting, from the mayor, which didn't get a hold of me, and I'm gonna throw him out there in front of us, so. He called my employees, the water, sir guys, he seemed low standards under that. I got a whole list of things, I won't go over everything, but everything he talked about in that meeting could have probably been easily resolved with probably a three to four-minute phone call. But did he do that? No, he did not. Would have been easier just to say, "Commissioner Perkins, I have some issues with your department. Can you maybe come down to City Hall, or maybe have a three to four-minute conversation, and meet with me and talk about this?" No, he did not. Have I seen the mayor since all this has transpired? Believe it or not, yes, I have. And has he talked to me? No, he has not. I will give him a bonus point, before our meeting tonight, I did stop into his office for a brief three to four minutes, and just let him know that I would like to be addressed of my department next time he decides to talk about them. I used to say this, but my department, I'm very darn proud of, along with Commissioner, you know, Stories Department, along with Commissioner Mesersman, we do a lot of stuff in this city. We put out Christmas lights, we put out fall festivities, we've had Mr. Bart Bradley, he drove kids all around the park, you know, of goodwill. My guys donated probably $300 to $400 worth of dollars to buy candy to go out for our fall fest. All kinds of things that could have been easily resolved, which is funny, because everything that was going on during these accusations are completely infactual. And if they had, they've been resolved. I could go over a few of them, I would be more unhappy to go over that. Just one of those, we talked about a camper we had parked out there. The reason why that happened is because that person that had that actually was the mayor's neighbor. Now, mayor's basement was, several times, and we've talked about it right here at City Hall, about how a camper, or any type of vehicle, should not be parked on the roads without proper identification. We knew the mayor was gonna raise a complaint, so we, out of goodness for heart, decided to park it overnight, so the mayor would not wake up to see that. He also accused my men of stealing scrap, inviting, as he says, soda pops. I haven't heard soda pops used, except for at the age of three or four years old, but that's okay. So people call soda, some people call pop, soda pop's a good combination of both, saying that they bought all this stuff. Ironically, I ran into a guy at the recycling plant, and one actually with Republic Recycling, with everything that could be recycled, a metric ton, a metric ton, which is a trailer, a semi-trailer, if anybody knows what something that is, which we all do, can only garner $40 to $45. I don't know about anybody else, but I've been out to Walmart lately, and a case of soda pop is about $7, $8. It's crazy. We talked about how we were having city equipment brought out and uncovered, like a lawnmower, horrible, horrible thing. That would actually winterize, pin it to the barn, but the mayor, once again, forgot that he had to call back out to melt winter, and to leave it out because they needed to be manicured during that time. I could go through this whole list of everything that was accused, but once again, this all could have been resolved by a single thing that was not done. Just call me, we'll go through the chain of command, I will write that out for anybody that would like to see that, but that was not done. So I just wanted to defend my guys and let them know that they are valuable in the city, no matter what they said about them, or who says about them. And I think that the mayor would owe a public apology to those men by going out to those departments and apologizing those guys for making them sound like crap and lowering the morale of those departments. And not only offending that, I don't care about me, but you have offended my departments. As for that, another thing, and I will say this in closing, there's a lot of things that were brought up. Talk about trimming the trees, we got, because they didn't wanna fall on the gas tank, that could have led to explosions, trimming trees. Didn't know how they did that, but you know, that's the thing, could have damaged the barn, would have been more cautious. But in closing, I've been a commissioner for about nine, 10 months, give or take, I've learned my job every time, and we all are. But the thing that I really see under this is that the mayor has been in office for over four years, actually, five plus years now, that a lot of these items just didn't develop in the last months, that you could have been addressing this for the last five and a half years. With that being said, I'm gonna close my comments, and I'd be happy to go over if anybody else would like to see those news, cameras, whatever you wanna do, but I'd be happy to address those. Thank you.
Did you discuss their approval of advancing amortizing to shift the bids on Lake Block beaches?
Nothing.
He treats an improvement that the Mr. Mesers...
I guess I have one purchase order, and you'll see in your packet, anti-oil, it is hydraulic oil for the street sweeper. I just need a motion to approve that purchase order.
Make it all second.
Make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gervailia? Yes. Mr. Shory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesersmith?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Yes.
A couple of things that I have on my list are a couple of handicap parking spots, and looking around the city, we've had one business relocate, and the business is an elder attorney, with the majority of his clientele of elder age, and have difficulty getting to the front door of the business, so we had discussions about creating a handicap spot for them. And then also, as we look on South Main, and creating an additional handicap spot down there. And so, two separate. The first one is at the northeast corner of Washington and Maple. And then the second one's at the northeast corner of South Main and Church Street. So these are simple motions I sent. So I'd like to make a motion that we add a handicap spot at the northeast corner of Washington and Maple.
Sure.
Mr. Gervailia? Yes. Mr. Shory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesersmith?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion that we add a handicap spot at the northeast corner of South Main and Church Street, on South Main.
Second, I do.
Mr. Gervailia? Yes. Mr. Shory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesersmith?
Yes.
Under C, the discussion of approval ordinance for a stop sign going north and south at the intersection of First and William Street, I have been monitoring that and watching that, and there is no stop sign the entire stretch of that street, from Huddleson all the way down. And so, and I am very stingy with my stop signs, I'd rather keep traffic flowing than stopped, but noting, noticing the nature of the neighborhoods that are around, and the narrowness of the street, and with the people that actually use the street, I would like to make a motion and have approval for a stop sign.
Another question.
Sure.
What is the reason for putting up a stop sign? Culture's not one on the street.
Sure, it's to slow people down, because we had a parallel street, the name escapes me, which is the street to the west.
You got, that's, I mean, what are you, whose words?
Right, it's a cross, it's the first cross street. You're just asking why there.
Well, why weren't we making it a full-way stop? Were there complaints?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And usually when people make complaints, I'd say, you know, I understand that, everybody drives, trying to understand, to get people to slow down.
And you, you had monitored it?
Yes, yeah, I've actually done it. I even know back during the time, in campaigning for the election, that was a street that I even walked in, even at that time I noticed, walking that street. And it wasn't because of that, but I think back, I'm like, "Oh yeah, I remember that being a busy, busy street." So just trying to get people to slow down, because when they come closer to the tracks, they go over the tracks, and they're right there. So if we can, we can cut the, we can cut the rate down that street.
The one I was, as long as it's been viewed monitored, then yes, sir. The one I was, as long as it's been viewed monitored, then yes, it is.
Do you want an ordinance to?
Yes, yes. What's that?
Is that?
That was it, you tried to? Was it you during the election?
Commissioner Gervalea? Yes. Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Messersman?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
And the last, and the last thing that I have on your I O B is the discussion regarding parking on the square. I've had a number of conversations with the businesses on the square, and I've actually, some of the business owners are here this evening. And I know that normally reserved for public comment, with them being here, would now be an okay, appropriate time to get them to the floor and say.
Be ideal.
Okay, sure. So, I'd like to defer to those that have a question or a comment in regards to parking around the square. And Jake, I even think that this is a good time to kind of tie in all the parking in general, because I know that the, with the demo happening and things being relocated and moved, questions are already coming up about where we're gonna park everybody, so. Yeah, Bill, please.
Well, basically, I've talked to most of the businesses on the square myself, too. And the few that are not on the square, but off the square. And. I'm Joe Sprague with County Sheet Antique Mall. And I'm just one business on the square, so. But what we've seen for years before I ever came around the Benton, there's always been parking concerns on the square. It's repeated, employees parking, taking all the spots of the businesses out front, not all of them, but. I can tell you on any day of the week, every single day, I looked out today, three cars in front of my store, all day. Common problem. I think the easy fix is looking at some sort of ordinance change, especially with the upcoming changes in the courthouse. If we can get a Monday to Friday, eight to four, helping only parking around the outer square, will solve 95% of our problems. When I say employees, I mean of my business, every business around the square, courthouse employees. The biggest concern we see coming imminently is the construction trucks, construction workers. I mean, if they take all of our spots, there's not a business on that square that can survive it. I know in a year and three months, that's how long I could own County Sheet Antique Mall. I have watched regular good customers drive around, drive around, third time, they drive away. And I know what they spend when they walk in the door. And I'm just one business, I know we have other business. I'm sure if you would like to talk, you're welcome to talk. White Rabbit over here goes pizza. And forgive me if I'm missing somebody else in the square. Just, we're just asking for your help. And that's the easiest fix that I think can be done. And we'd like to see that done before the courthouse starts coming down, because otherwise, we're in trouble. I mean, I already see the impact now from people who drive off. And like I said, there's, you have a lot of great employees at the courthouse that don't park in front of our businesses. There are some that do. You know that's what I do. And then the rest of the problem is employees of the businesses themselves, so. But we're not here to point fingers at anybody, we're just here to say, here's a way to fix the problem, so.
How are you planning on police?
Well, I would be happy to get the phone when I see someone parked out front, and I'm sure that every business on that square would do the same thing.
And call the police?
Yes, and just say.
We got one, I'm not, I'm not against, I got one policeman on the day shift.
Okay.
He runs his side deal off.
I understand.
The only way that you could do it is if they're parked there, you could call them, not gonna guarantee he will be there.
And we're willing to take that gamble. The time itself.
Right.
Will help alleviate the majority of our problems.
I think once you get somebody towed away or whatever, they do write the ticket.
We're not trying to get people towed away.
It will, I'm just saying, if it's an ordinance.
I understand.
They gotta do something.
Right. You write a ticket. It might be one verbal warning to them, and they may never do it again.
Hopefully. If that's the case, they, after the work gets out, it'll straighten up some.
Yes, it will.
But it's gonna take a while, ask that man. Ask Joe, he went through months and months of.
I know businesses are willing to make that call. We don't have a choice.
Well, I agree.
When all the spots are gone, we're in trouble.
I agree. But you want them people to come in there looking for in your business, looking for the people that owns that car? Or, you know, I don't, they did, Joe, he didn't quite like it, you know?
You mean the police?
Yeah. They'll come in and find out if they're.
I'm not gonna call if it's someone pulling up to run in the courthouse and do something, come back out and leave. But if it's someone that is a repeat person that is always doing it, I'm gonna pick up the phone and call. We're not worried about the 20-minute people. We're worried about the all-day people.
I have a question. The question I have, and is our responsibility to support and protect our businesses on the square? So I'm glad that you're here to speak with us on this matter. And you and I've talked about it before.
Yes, we have.
So your idea of customer parking only, you're limited to customer parking only, the idea that you're presenting to us tonight. Are you suggesting that there would be designated air, parking for in front of the stores? I mean, if someone parks in front of your place and if.
The entire outer, the entire outer square is what we're looking at.
The entire outer square.
Every business is helped that way.
Every, so what you're suggesting is the entire outer square be customer parking for any business?
For any business on the square.
Okay, okay.
We get into the square, some of us are gonna get some business out of it.
So there may be someone parking in front of your store that never comes into your store.
It happens all the time.
Right, I know.
I understand that.
I just wanted to have that.
Because as long as it's not the employee or the attorney of that business.
You got it, okay, gotcha.
I'll address that that way.
He has, he has a bit back. He has a bit back. How, how 30 minutes or just no parking?
Well, he and I have had a number of conversations, and much like your value, I've gone around, I've talked with the business owners on the square. And some of the challenge is, how do we, how do we generate more traffic in the businesses? And if we do have employees parking and taking up extended amounts of time, it makes it a challenge. So it's not even designating how much time a guest or a customer could park on the square. It's delineating the difference between an employee and a customer.
Not looking for a time limit, really. Is there in my store for four hours shopping? I'm happy, yeah, trust me, I'm happy.
My wife's not allowed to come in.
But we're not looking for a S O A time limit. I know that some businesses have expressed an interest in having one spot that would be potentially pickup or delivery only. Before this would change, I would not want to give up another spot like that. But once the change is in place, a spot like that would possibly be beneficial to the restaurants.
Well, I think that's one of the things we talked, that you and I talked about is doing it in stages.
Yes.
And especially with the courthouse, if it comes down, we lose. I think there's a lot of things that are impacting along the way, and making sure that we do, because I know some of the stakes concern is, what happens if all of the contractors do take the back lot behind their business?
You're right.
What do we do?
Yes.
And so it's about getting them where we need them to be, getting employees where we need them to be, and creating the most parking for customers that we can possibly create.
Right.
For the next two to three years. And hopefully, hopefully generate some new patterns or some new habits of how they are getting ready.
There's a lot of spots around the square. And just imagine if all of those were actually customers. A lot of business going through every one of our doors. I don't know that was answered yet.
But anyway, excuse me, because we're hard workers to go and park. Dave, do you know?
Well, I can give you some, I can give you some ideas of what I've heard discussed.
That's why I think you say.
First, I think that part of the contract biz will say that the workers cannot park on the square. There's been some discussion about a staging area away from the square. There's even been some talk about the old C I B S Ameren way down, is it Washington? Is that what they run there? About staging area there, where they would have to be bussed in back to the square. There's been discussion about send out a letter to all employees that there be no parking on the square. But keep in mind now, when the county, when the treasurer and the clerk move to the Campbell Building permanently, you're probably talking 12, maybe, out of that group, 12 cars that'll be moved to the, to the, either East Church or to the Benton Evening News area. There's been, and I don't think, it was discussed in an open meeting, not anything out of school. There's been some preliminary discussion with Pizza Bob. There's still some grant money available that, about purchasing his home there next to Evening News Office, and making, and adding that to the parking lot. Those are some things I know are in the works. And I want to stress, everything you said is valid, and everything you said is correct. And I think that the same concern that you're expressing, I've heard expressed at the county board meeting. So there, it's, you're not, it's not falling on deaf ears, I can tell you that, I think they're very concerned about it. So that's, that's kind of where some of the things are at, right there, they're working on. You know, I made a comment today, I worked at the Benton Evening News Office for about 10 years, and there are several parking spots addition to the Evening News Office down East Church Street. I mean, I've already got mine picked out, I said I'm going full circle alive. I was parking down front of the old Grant School down there, not Grant, but Logan School, 25 years ago. Now, I've come back around, probably gonna be parking there again, so. But I think there's some, really some things, and I would encourage you to come to the county board meeting and express the same concerns you did here tonight to them, because I, I'm sure they're gonna be receptive to what you got to say. You know, and I talked to Joe Pizza, and I understand that Dirk, you know, we had the same conversation, it was just a couple weeks ago. Hopefully, help to live there with some things going on.
And in just regards to parking, that, I mean, I started this back in the summer. And looking for every possible spot we can get, and I've even added spots that may get hard to speed to leave the bank. So I actually go back and retract some of those at some point. But even if it's for temporary time, how, where can I find even three or four more parking spots? Either on the square, around the square, adjacent to the square. They may not all be permanent spots that live post-construction and post-new courthouse, but in that intermediate, you know, interim, how do we create as many spots as we can? So I'm conscious of driving within a block of the square going, how can I make official designated spots for more people to park as close to the square as possible?
There'll be no parking on the, on the corner by R R Motorsports, because he drove stakes in the ground all the way around there today, so. You're gonna drive over a stake or you're gonna be parked there, so.
Yeah, I thought that was happening today.
Also, too, one other thing, that the Baptist Church, which would be kind of cornered from the, they have given permission to the counties, they've got about 25 parking spaces over in their lot. And they've given the county permission to use those, 22 rights.
Oh, great.
So that, so on the other side of South Main, there'll be parking available there also for county employees to park or for people, attorneys to park? For attorneys to park? Thank you, Tom. Anyway, that's another thing I forgot to mention also.
Great, great, very good. Good, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Jake, that's Joe Pizza. I'd just like to point out the obvious, what was kind of said, after talking with Randall and the county engineer and Jim a little bit. Parking around the inside of the square is gonna be obsolete. There's 49 parking spots there. They're beating the dog that 17 parking spots in the Evening News are gonna fix it. Instant shortage of 32 parking spots. Need to be finding parking spots in the city, because I know it's not a city problem, but. This is Kentucky, if a business failed, it was invented in Franklin County, so that's kind of why I'm here. And I have the solution for nine spots right away. I'd like to get put on, somebody to throw on the next meeting if we could. I think we all know what nine spots those are, the south side, or the north side of East Main.
How about you and I get together after the meeting, what set of time? You know, I'd love to sit down and talk to you a little.
Okay. Because Church Street, everybody starts parking on Church Street, and we're detouring, it's gonna be just as tight as East Main, so I don't know. I'd like to see somebody put that on tonight, so we can get it out of the way next meeting.
Good, put it on the agenda. In three weeks, yeah, in three weeks.
Last thing, we'll be able to sit down, because I drive for S T P, we travel Church Street once for all time, back and forth, the shuttle that we do. And will they be able to sit down when the construction starts coming that way?
Yeah, probably my classic response to you is probably, it's gonna be a problem.
It's gonna be a problem.
We can't actually go to a ballgame and think, look, there's $8 billion worth of construction going on around the stadium, and things are tight down there, too. So we just have to show caution and be creative and work together, and I'm confident people will.
I walk in on the left end of it. When does the structure start, so I can tell my company when we start watching out for it and making different arrangements when to pick people up?
I'm sure the square.
Yes.
It's probably gonna be in the summer, late summer. I think they're scheduled now to go down, the demolition maybe in April or May, and then there's talk about the structure starting after that a month or so. They're still saying it's gonna be finished in the last, last quarter of 2021. That was what the, I think the architect and engineer both said at a meeting Friday, the fourth quarter of 2021. And you know, and I agree with you, Mayor, it's, it's gonna be difficult for a while. It's kind of like when I'm driving into work for a long time there on North Main, and you know those bumping roads and the barricades here, and I just kept telling.
We will speak of such things in here.
I just kept telling myself, you know, if any day comes, this is gonna be working. And please carry yourself back when this is going on, but then we'll be working, I believe.
No, we're gonna make it.
Ah, we will, we'll make, yeah.
But Joe, thank you, I have something to say. Jake and White Rabbit. We'll do anything we can to solve the problem that Lee has been asking about working for people, so.
And that's, Mr. Mayor, this is other comments, that's all I have.
You're done with that? I gotta, I gotta go to watch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Something's up in safety, Mr. Story.
I got a couple of parking orders. One is for a forensic license that was set to expire February 22. I think we can change my candidate request to pay the renewal fee. Allow us to continue to receive software updates, continue our forensic investigation with smartphones and other devices. Fee is covered in the current budget, and we paid out license fee by night. And it is worth $3,700 from Selfright Incorporated. Make the most of it that day.
Commissioner Gervalea? Yes. Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Messersman?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Next one I have, Mayor, is the annual renewal for I R A, firefighter response software, which is from New York, $735 to make the most of it.
Commissioner Gervalea?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Messersman?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
That's all I got, Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
That software also goes to help out the water department, too, anytime we need to be notified to shut off.
Does?
So people should know that as well.
I didn't know that.
That I am responding.
You guys are on that?
Yeah, they'll be on the call this for that. Anytime the structure fire or something, somebody should come out.
Oh, so on the structure fire, yeah, just, yeah, just on the structure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's very useful.
You finish? It's not from finance, Commissioner Gervalea.
Okay. First thing on the agenda is the approval of kind of purchase orders. The first is for a, for paper stays, and this is a program that allows the copies of the bills to be scanned into the account schedule system for storage. And the maintenance renewal is due on this, and the amount to that is $1,006.2. And I need to make a motion that that be approved. Commissioner Gervalea?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Messersman?
Yes. Yes.
The second thing that I have to put table to the annual Chamber of Commerce dinner for participation with the, with the city. And this takes place on January, sorry, January 28. And this is an amount of $210. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, obtain for the table for the annual Chamber Dinner. And we have all the resources to support it. For eight. Commissioner Gervalea?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Okay, then the thing I have is for the monthly bills. For this month, the, the account payable is $213,330.3. And then other funds, which is mostly related to community events, kind of $1,318.28, which makes a total of the bills of $214,648.31. I make a motion that those be approved.
I have a couple of questions on the bill. Fighting of the day, and I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page and understand.